And welcome to the Cedar Falls Committee, the whole meeting this May 7, 2018. I now call this meeting to order. We have three topics this evening. First is a Public Safety Awards. Second is University Avenue Update. And third is Bills and Payroll. At this time, I'm going to join Director Olson for some awards to be given out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, tonight, we have the privilege of presenting awards for those public safety employees who have performed exceptional work in this past year. We have awards for Police Officer and Firefighter of the Year, Supervisors of the Year, Volunteers of the Year, and several awards of excellence to give out. The mayor will be presenting the awards to the recipients. And for those of you who don't know, we have Fire Chief John Boswick and Assistant Chief Craig Burdy here to help us out tonight. But before we get started, I'd like to say thanks to a few that are not receiving awards tonight. First, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their direction and support this past year. We've accomplished a lot in the last year. Without their assistance, I don't know that we could've got all that done without their direction, without their support. That's much appreciated. I'd also like to thank the Public Safety Administration team. We've got a lot of supervisors that have worked the past couple of years, helping us move forward as we progress into the great team, the great public safety team that we have for this city. Many of them have given selfishly, given a lot of hours and a lot of hard work to what we've been doing here, so I want to thank them. We do have many talented public safety employees on our department that do terrific jobs every day. Unfortunately, we can only recognize a few every year. I think all the citizens of Cedar Falls benefit by all the great work that all these employees do. We have a dedicated team, and these professionals contribute greatly to the low crime rate and the low fire loss incidents we have in Cedar Falls when compared to other cities. So with that, I'd like to get started. Our first award is for Police Officer of the Year, and that award goes to Officer Jovan Officer Creighton is currently assigned to second shift patrol, has been a member of the Cedar Falls Police Department since 2013. Officer Creighton was recognized by his supervisors for his hard work and dedication to the city. Officer Creighton has a positive attitude and has always kept him busy during the shifts, serving the citizens of Cedar Falls. He's the type of employee that doesn't let grass grow under his feet. Officer Creighton is commended for his work ethic and willingness to help others. Officer Creighton is a great asset to the Cedar Falls Public Safety Department and the city of Cedar Falls. It is with great pleasure we award Jovan with Police Officer of the Year. Our next award, Firefighter of the Year, goes to firefighter Jason Campbell. Jason has been a firefighter in Cedar Falls for nearly 12 years. He started the city as a volunteer firefighter before getting hired full-time. Jason has taken on several challenges during his career and has assisted with the fire prevention programs. He strives to be the best firefighter he can be and can be counted on by others to pull his own weight. Firefighter Campbell is another employee that is a great asset to the Cedar Falls Public Safety Department, the Fire Division, and the Cedar, Cedar Falls. It is with great pleasure we award Jason Firefighter of the Year. The RJ Voss Award for Management Excellence goes Lieutenant Kelly Yates. The Supervisor of the Year award is presented to Lieutenant Kelly Yates. Lieutenant Yates has currently signed to second shift patrol and has been employed in the city since 2002. Not only does Lieutenant Yates supervise the police officers on her shift, but has been tasked with supervising the Community Service Officer program for numerous years. This program alone is a tasking job. Lieutenant Yates is fully engaged at work and is aware of all activity occurring during her tour and sees that all on her shift are providing the best service possible. Lieutenant Yates has a solid work ethic and demonstrates good leadership. The Fire Officer of the Year award goes to Battalion Chief Roger Stensland. Battalion Chief Roger Stensland has been with the Cedar Falls Fire Division for nearly 27 years. Stensland currently supervises green shift. Battalion Chief Stensland is known for his creative thinking when solving problems and performing training. He challenges the public safety staff and is committed to making improvements every day to the Public Safety Department. He's a great influence on others and has a calm, level head, a great person to work with. It is with great pleasure we award Roger as Fire Officer of the Year. The Conger Reserve Officer of the Year program goes to Reserve Officer Matt Buck. The Reserve Officer of the Year award is being presented to Matt Buck. Matt has been a member of the reserve unit since 2014. Matt's full-time job is working for the city's Public Works Department. Reserve Officer Buck was selected as a Reserve Officer of the Year by his supervisors and coworkers based on his strong work ethic and history of taking on additional responsibilities. Matt is always willing to volunteer for special assignments and other duties. The officers enjoy working with him and say he is quick to pick up on the skills necessary to be an effective officer. The Alternative Staff Firefighter of the Year goes to Jason Dolph. Firefighter Jason Dolph has worked for the city of Cedar Falls for many years as a part-time firefighter. Jason is also the fire chief in Raymond and works a full-time job for another company. He's also heavily involved with Blackout County Emergency Management Team. Over the past year, he has been active with a multi-agency countywide drone team that Cedar Falls is a part of. He provides instructions and supervisions to the team. Fighter fighter Dolph is a great asset to the Public Safety Department. It's with great pleasure we award Jason as Alternative Staff Firefighter of the Year. This next award is an award of excellence that goes to Lieutenant Dan Brown. Now, Dan couldn't make it here tonight, but I would just like to read a little bit about Dan and the reason for him getting the award. Lieutenant Dan Brown is being presented with an award of excellence. He's been employed with the city of Cedar Falls since 1980. Dan is actually one of the few employees in the Public Safety Department that have been here longer than me. Lieutenant Brown has been responsible for grant writing for the department for many years. His work in this area has brought in tens of thousands of dollars, and he's benefited the city significantly. Lieutenant Brown's assistance with operations on first shift is one of the reasons his shift has been so successful in the past year. Congratulations to Dan. This next award of excellence goes to Captain Derek Brown. Fire Captain Derek Brown is being presented with an award of excellence. Captain Brown has been with the fire service for nearly 20 years. Captain Brown is also a reserve police officer over the police division and also volunteers for the Hudson Fire Department. Derek maintains the city's AED, the Automatic Defibrillator Program, and manages the Emergency Medical Response Program on the Fire Division. We also have an award of excellence for Officer Mike Hazlett. Officer Mike Hazlett is being presented with an award of excellent. He is currently assigned to third shift patrol and has been a member of the police division since 2001. Officer Hazlett was very active on third shift and took the role of acting lieutenant for nearly half a year. His work as an acting lieutenant was exceptional. He's a great resource for officers in the department, is able to handle all calls with a level head and realistic view. Officer Hazlett's dedication and motivation makes him an excellent asset to the city and recipient of this award. This next award of excellence goes to Fire Captain Bobby Wright. Captain Wright has been with the Cedar Falls Fire Division for more than 18 years. Captain Wright spent several years updating inspections process and conducting rental inspections of over 3,000 properties in town. Captain Wright has recently transferred back to shift and is now serving as an acting battalion chief on his shift. Captain Wright has assisted the police division as a reserve police officer for 12 years. This next award of excellence goes to Officer Kari Ray. Officer Ray has currently assigned to third shift patrol, has been a police officer since 2002. Officer Ray also recently spent nearly half of his years acting lieutenant on third shift. She's been very helpful as a field trainer for the new recruits and can be counted on to complete any tasks by her supervisors. She's a role model on her shift. Officer Ray's dedication and motivation makes her an excellent recipient of this award. This next award of excellence goes to Fire Captain Rob Inaway. Fire Captain Rob Inaway has been with the Cedar Falls Fire Division for nearly 24 years. Captain Inaway is a member of the State Task Force for Incident Management. He's also trained on the United States National Grid System and teaches the same to police and fire in Cedar Falls and surrounding communities. Captain Inaway recently spent several days assisting in La Porte City with their search for a missing teenager using the National Grid System search. Captain Inaway's experience and dedication makes him an excellent recipient of this award. This next award of excellence goes to Officer Brian Johansson. Officer Johansson is currently assigned to the investigative unit. In 2017, he spent time on second shift and later transitioned to investigations. Officer Johansson is always willing to assist other officers when his expertise is needed. Officer Johansson has worked several critical cases and is dedicated to solving those crimes. He works many hours above and beyond what is required of him. Officer Johansson's dedication and motivation makes him an excellent recipient of this award. Our next award of excellence goes to Officer Mike Marcott. Officer Marcott is currently assigned to first shift patrol. Officer Marcott has been involved in many sensitive and critical investigations in this past year. He's a go-to person that can be counted on by other officers and supervisors to assist them in any way possible. He's very active and capable of resolving any task and handling any calls that comes his way. He's another dedicated and motivated employee. This next award of excellence goes to CSO Sam Zobel. Sam Zobel has worked as a community service officer in the police division for three years. Sam is very detail-oriented and has assisted with supervising and training other CSOs. Sam has assisted and been a large part of many projects in the police division and served in a lead position among the CSOs. Thank you, Sam, for your dedication over the years. So this concludes our award ceremony. I would like to thank all those officers with their great work this year, those that are sitting here and those that aren't, the firefighters that are here and those that are not. We've had a great year, and we've got a great team. I'm proud of this team. I'm proud to be part of this organization.
Thank you, Director Olson, for putting that together. Appreciate also Assistant Chief Burdy and Fire Chief Boswick for that ceremony. A lot of great support amongst the council and myself, but also the crowds and the indication, great support throughout the community and the families as well. Moving on to the next topic for this evening is University Avenue Update. Director Stephanie Sheets and staff will be presenting.
Thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. Myself and John Ressler, our city engineer, will give this update this evening. On University Avenue, this is part of trying to give some regular updates about what's happening with the construction, as well as an update on the budget, and then answer any questions that the council might have. So just, I think more for maybe the public that might be watching is just going over again what the components of the project included. Phase one of the project completed in July of 2017. Phase two kicked off last year in 2017 and was contracted as a two-year project. So we'll talk a little bit about what's been completed and where the areas of work will focus this summer here. And then phase three kicked off here this spring when we bid that project to the end of last year. So those are the various phases of the project, all contracted to be completed by the end of this year. So I think with that, I will hand it over to John to talk about a little bit on the... Well, I'm sorry. I'll go through this construction phasing here. Okay, sorry, this slide threw me off a little bit. I already talked a little bit about how we had a two-phase project here in 2017. I've talked before about how we bid the bookends of the project, or started the project on the bookends, I should say, due to drainage. And then most of that work completed. There were still some components to complete yet this spring, but then the majority of the 2018 construction is focusing in the middle area of the phase two project, more or less from Round Street to Cedar Heights Drive is where this year's construction focuses. But again, John's going to talk a little bit more in detail about some of the areas of work that they're focusing at this point more specifically.
Thank you, Stephanie. So this is a graphic. It's not the greatest graphic, but the highlighted yellow area kind of speaks for itself. That's the main area of focus right now on phase two. As Stephanie mentioned, the construction is really going on kind of between Round and Cedar Heights. So at Round right now, there's some sidewalk work they're finishing and some driveways. They have, there's a frontage road near Midway that they have finished pouring, and that is curing right now and will be open soon. They have some backfill work to do there as well, but that's moving along. One of the areas of focus right now is around Cedar Heights Drive and the roundabout. We weren't able to complete that north leg last year, so actually today, we went to kind of a unique traffic control situation where we have a one-way northbound on Cedar Heights, and then for southbound traffic, they're diverted onto Cadillac over to Midway where they have a full access, a full signal to gain access to University. That had to be done just based on right-of-way constraints, some other project constraints, but we have stressed to the contractor the importance of minimizing that one-way setup. So we're estimating that time, if the weather cooperates, to be three weeks. The businesses in that area were all communicated to, and it's moving forward, and today is the first day of that. So finishing up the north leg of Cedar Heights and some other sidewalk and a little roundabout work in that area. And then the main area of stage two is kind of that core area between Round and Cedar Heights. They're currently working on the north side, and traffic is diverted on the south side as head-to-head. So they've done some water main work there, I believe, storm sewer work. They hope to switch sides right around Memorial Day, so it'll be close to that timeframe. Again, it's all weather-dependent, but we're, in general, we're seeing good weather so far, so we're making good progress. This just shows the traffic pattern that I explained where they're working on the north half, and traffic is being pushed head-to-head on the south side of the roadway. One traffic map that we also put on our website that's not shown in the presentation is just the one-way configuration of Cedar Heights and the use of Cadillac and Midway as a detour. But that's also up on the website and has been communicated to the public. So just a little bit of a summary on phase two schedule. We're about 65% complete. Current work, as I mentioned, sanitary, water main, storm sewer, concrete pavement, and then seating and sodding in areas. Our target completion date is November of 2018. Moving on a little bit to phase three, that's first by the interchange with 58. So the area that just highlighted is stage one. That's currently what the contractor is working on. Currently, those ramps at 58 are closed and are being paved right now. There's some storm sewer work that's being done as well. And, let's see, and then that will be, stage two, will be completed from July to October. The northbound exit ramp for stage two will always remain open, but the southbound entrance ramp to 58 on stage two will have to be closed, just like the two ramps were on stage one, but we're doing our best to minimize the closures. But that's just something with the construction staging, we chose to do, really to accelerate the project so we didn't have to go into a second year. So just a little bit in summary, too, on completion dates. Stage one is supposed to be completed on July 14th. This is an incentive, disincentive contract, so the contractor can earn an incentive of $5,000 a day, up to $40,000 if they finish ahead of the July 14th schedule. There is a disincentive if they finish after the 14th of $5,000 a day with no limit. And then also on stage two, which is shown here as well, there is also incentive disincentive on that as well with a completion date of October 26th. So in that, in the case of stage two, it's $5,000 a day incentive, up to $60,000 for that October 26th date, and a disincentive of $5,000 a day with no limit after the October 26th deadline. Little bit of a traffic map, again, and what's currently going on. Contractor is working on the north half of University. The ramps are closed, so traffic is pushed head-to-head on the south side of University. The northbound exit ramp is open. The contractor is working in that area simultaneously, but that ramp does remain open. We did have a little bit of a construction hiccup where the signal was damaged for the southbound entrance ramp to 58, and we worked that out, I think in about a day and a half, and got that functioning again. So we had to close that left turn lane temporarily, but it's back up and running. Just a little summary again on phase three. So we are approximately 15% complete on phase three, doing some concrete paving on the north side. The storm sewer work is wrapped up. The ramps are, have been poured. I don't know if they're completely poured. I'd have to double-check that, but for the most part, they're poured. Dry Run Creek Bridge repair is going on right now. There are some repairs that were required with the project, and then the storm sewer work, with the target completion of both stages of October 26th, as I mentioned. Stephanie was going to go over a little bit of the budget for the project.
Just some updates on where we stand in terms of expenditures with the project. There, we've listed each phase of construction separately, so you can see what was bid as the project there. $14 million for phase one, $10.8 million for phase two, and $3.9 for phase three, and where we stand in terms of bills that have been paid to date on that. We still have some retainage in phase one as we're looking to try to close out a couple elements with that and be in the maintenance bond period for that project. In terms of right-of-way, we are through our right-of-way acquisition. We are finishing things up in terms of the case that we had with JLL at the corner of Cedar Heights and University, but we have no more planned acquisitions, so those numbers should not change from this point forward. What we do have, I guess, in phase two, maybe we might still have a lingering of a sign that's moved or protected. Those types of things make it under the right-of-way expenditures, so fences or things like that. We saw some of that happening in phase one where we started to see, we still saw some bills coming through. So there's going to be minor things like that finishing up with phase two. And then we've also here listed all the fees that we have had with the design, as well as the construction oversight that we've utilized both to help us accomplish. So that just lists out where we are to date on that.
Great, thanks to you both. Any questions from council that relates to the project updates?
I'm just wondering, you showed us phase two towards Waterloo, but from Round to Waterloo Road, there's still quite a bit of sidewalk and sodding kind of stuff. Is there a timeframe and the pedestrian crossings at Round are yet to be done, too? Are they going to be kind of done at the same time that the trail on the east end's going to be done, or?
Those areas are being, I know, worked on right now. There's, in that northeast corner of Round and University, they're kind of working on pouring that driveway for that business and those sidewalks as well. So that's kind of going on simultaneously and is really scheduled for completion in the same timeframe as phase two, but I know the contractor is working in those areas as well.
That would include the landscaping and stuff?
Yes, that's my understanding, yes.
John, on the incentives, disincentives, is that weather-related? If we had a monsoon rainy spell for 10 days, is that rain or shine, these incentives?
It's, yes, it's rain or shine. There's, it's kind of a no-excuses setup.
Very good. Thanks again. Moving on, council, item three is our motion to approve bills and payroll.
So moved.
Motion second, one favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. This concludes the committee of the whole meeting this evening. We'll wait to the top of the hour for the regular city council meeting. Thank you.